Good evening, everyone. Evening. All right, it's kind of crowded in here. I know there are people outside. It's a little warm. But welcome to the Rockingham County School Board meeting for July 12th. Thank you for being here this evening with us. We are going to start the meeting. Let me just make sure I have the agenda. We'll call the meeting to order. I need a board member to approve the agenda, please. Or make a motion to approve the agenda.
How move we approve the agenda for this evening's meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Any questions or discussion, board members? Okay, seeing none, please vote. This is a voice vote. So, that's right, voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to take a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll move on to board member comments and highlights by board members. Mr. Falk? Thank you.
Ms. Lohr? Hi, welcome, everyone. One highlight I have, I have to put my glasses on for, I was able to chat with Ms. Abernathy over at Broadway High School. And she had a couple of things from the year that she would love for me to pass along, including the partnership with the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank was successful this year and delivered food to over 300 students two times a month for the last 15 months. It became a school-wide project with faculty members and students assisting with preparing food bags. During the first semester, the construction and geometry fusion class built 50 desks for students in need of workspace at home during virtual learning. They had six students selected for All-Star Band and two students selected for All-State Choir. So we're very proud of those students. The baseball team had a successful season, finishing second in the region. Eight total school records were broken and three players are attending D1, D2, and junior college respectfully to compete. Evan Armentraut placed third in the 400-meter event at the All-State Track Meet. And the FFA has four state-winning teams that are moving on to national convention, as well as one outgoing vice pres- state vice president and one incoming state vice president. We're very proud of those students. I also, on a personal note, wanted to mention that I was able to attend the state FFA convention that was held here in Rockingham County because of COVID and because of restrictions with overnight events. And that was just such an amazing event. I'm so very proud of not only Rockingham County advisors, FFA advisors, but advisors from all over the state. Because as you, I'm sure, are aware, this was a difficult year to get students involved and encourage them to do things. And they had over 1,000 people at the Rockingham County Fairgrounds participating in FFA events. So I was just so proud of the work that our teachers, not only in FFA, but all of our teachers in Rockingham County have done this year. And I would like to take a moment to thank them. So, thank you, and thanks to them.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Dr. McQuillen?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Good evening, everyone. I believe that one of the big highlights for me is the fact that we're here. We're all here, and we weren't here last summer in 2020, but we're here in 2021. And we're just grateful that the students are back in school. We're glad that we're moving forward, and that is my highlight.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. I would just like to publicly send my condolences to the family of Fred Everly. Mr. Everly was both a member of the school board and a longtime representative for District 2 on the Board of Supervisors. And Mr. Everly passed away this past week. And certainly, our thoughts and best wishes and prayers are with the Everly family.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. Scheikle?
As Dr. McQuillen indicated, it's a highlight to focus again on education, on education for all students in environments that are caring and safe for them. And I just wanted to mention three pieces of recognition that the school division just got this week. One is a Trusted Learning Environment Seal from the Consortium for School Networking. Mr. Perkins played a major role in that. It indicates a high level of protection of student data and student privacy. We have about 13,800 public school divisions in the country, and there are only 17, including Rockingham, who've earned that honor. We were also selected as one of 65 demonstration sites by the American Association of School Administrators for excellence in learning and excellence in education for all students, with particular recognition for our efforts in hands-on learning and mental behavioral health. And then also, the Virginia is for Learners Innovation Network just announced today that Rockingham was one of the school divisions selected again for innovation in learning. So lots of good things happening, and thankfully, we'll be able to focus on that again in the fall with our students back in the buildings and with school divisions from across the country being able to work with us on improving our education so that we can truly serve all of our students as well as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. Thank you, board members, for sharing highlights this evening. Many thanks to our staff and our teachers and our administrative personnel that are continuing to work through the summer. School doesn't, when school ends, it doesn't finish, but it keeps on going. So we appreciate that. We obviously have an incredible amount of interest in Rockingham County schools right now, more so than we've ever had. And we appreciate that interest and feedback, but it also generates an incredible amount of work for, particularly for administrative personnel in our offices. So I know they're trying their best to respond and talk with our constituents and our citizens, and we ask for your continued patience. When we get to the public comments section, I will mention a few things. So be prepared for that, particularly if you're a family group that has signed up. Each of you signed up individually. You may want to discuss that, the possibility of just one speaking and both of you standing at the podium, because we have close to 25 people already signed up this evening. Thank you. We're going to move into information items, and I think Mr. Hand is here to talk about the Special Ed Advisory Committee. I think Mrs. Hamm and Mr. Longcor are here with us also.
Yes, it is time again for our annual Special Education Advisory Committee report. We do this every summer. We do this every summer. We are, as you're receiving right now, there's a hard copy of that. Mrs. Hamm is our new chair for the Special Education Advisory Committee. And we have your Jason Longcor, who is now our past chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee. Not yet. I'll give you a cue. Hi. Mrs. Hamm said that she would enlarge our participation in meetings, and I had no idea of her potential there. Before I get started, we do have a gift for Mr. Longcor. He has served for five years as chair of the CAC committee, and he has done an awful lot of work in developing a foundation, if you will, for increasing our membership. In all seriousness, you know I've tried for 22 years to increase membership. And with Jason and now with Mrs. Hamm, we are experiencing great parental participation on the committee. They're actually taking over roles. They've actually met without me, which was grand. So, I appreciate that, and I think that we'll continue that. So, without further ado, let me provide you with this gift, or Mrs. Hamm will do so.
I'd like to thank you for all your time and your passion in serving special education students in Rockingham County and the five years that you've been as chair. You've put a lot of time, you've gone to other CAC meetings, other localities, and we really appreciate it. And thank you for continuing to serve as past chair, to give us that knowledge and help us in the leadership. So, thank you for your time.
Congratulations. So, I guess the floor is mine now? Okay. Well, I'll be as brief as I can. I want to thank everyone. I thank you for the gift. Thank everybody for here. I'm sure everyone's here for a reason. What got me involved in this was my passion for my son, happens to be autistic. We represent the special education kids and the special needs in Rockingham County. If any of you out there have any free time, know anything, we're always looking for more opinions, more ideas. And our job is to inform the board and the school of the things, the unmet needs of what the school does. It's been my pleasure for the last five years. Unfortunately, my job now, I'm now the boss, so I don't have as much free time as I used to. And luckily, God brought Amber into my life, and she came out of nowhere, and she has single-handedly re-enteredized the group. And I'm staying on as we created past chair because I still want to be able to help and advise and kind of lead down the path and hopefully not make the same foibles that we have. One of the things that Amber has done lately, it's really worked out, and we might need some help with the board, from the board, is we kind of started doing more of a grassroots recruitment rather than trying to hand out things from the top and things like that. So, we've gotten involved. So, what we really need, TA school district seems to be well-represented now. What we need is more from the other schools, parents. If you know parents, just let us know and get them involved. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Amber, because this will be the first time that the CAC has ever actually done like a report-report that we did all on our own. So, okay, thank you. And thank you all, and keep going.
All right, currently, I just want to go over the estimated numbers in Rockham County. An estimated number, which this can always change because it changes at the beginning of the school year, we have approximately 1,270 students that are special education needs. So, that goes from age two to post-grad beyond 12th grade. You guys can look at the membership. We also, I just want to recognize, April Helper is also the vice chair. So, and currently, we have a position secretary vacant. One thing that we've gone over the last couple of meetings is J. Lorick put together a big statewide study. And this is not just Rockingham County, this is the whole state, and what can be improved for special education services for students. They reported 27 recommendations, and so as a committee, we've gone through 20 of them. We still have seven more to go. The RCPS, supposedly, the Virginia Department of Education is supposed to do state audits. We currently haven't had one in 10 years. That is no fault of Rockingham County. That is the Virginia Department of Education not having the staff to actually do the audits. We understand, CAC understands, this has been an awful year, transition in COVID and trying to serve special education students like we have in previous years. And hopefully, as we return back to hopefully as normal as can be, depending on the regulations of COVID, hopefully, those services can remain and continue. So, first, I'd like to just kind of talk about some of the successes, and these are successes parents brought up at CAC meetings. Some students receive services if they advocate for them. If students fit the mold, then services are adequate. You know, for example, low-functioning autism students. Most teachers and case managers make an effort to do the best they can. Case managers communicate with parents, and they care about the students, which is very valuable. Autism program for low-functioning students at RCPS is well-designed, and it's sometimes the reason actually people move into Rockingham County, because that program is so phenomenal. J. Lorick recommendation number 19. One thing it talks about is recruitment and retaining special education students, and I think that is a problem throughout the state. What RCPS has done is they have actually worked with JMU, and they've created a program for educators that want to go into special education teaching to have that program and to be taught and actually produce teachers, special education students in Rockham County. I believe there's about 10 that have graduated from that program this year that now can actually serve in that role. So, that is something, a collaboration that RCPS has done with JMU to fulfill that need. Annual budget, we had an increase for new sign language interpreter, a sped assistant, OT, which is always beneficial, because we always need more providers as kids need their services. One thing that, when you have an IEP, RCPS is using Virginia IEP, which is a computerized based program where they input all the IEP information in there, they do the goals, and that has been a great improvement. And I think as RCPS staff get trained, it actually is improving certain things. We are happy to know that there actually is a parent portal piece of that program, which RCPS has just funded. And so, that would give the parents the ability to actually go on and see all the documents and the IEPs, just like the teachers would. And so, that's going to be a great resource for the parents. J. Lorick recommendation 13, it talks about services for non-academic and extracurricular activities. You know, some of the outstanding things that RCPS has done is they hired a person to run and help supervise a student while doing cross-country. And so, that was phenomenal. That's, you know, that's above and beyond, and giving students that have special needs the opportunity to be in activities like all the other students. All right, concerns brought up by CAC. Services offered to help regression with COVID recovery services. This is kind of our concern. As most students have had trouble engaging, special education students naturally sometimes have trouble engaging, and so that has been a concern. Students were behind before COVID, and they continue to fall behind because of what has had to happen with COVID. Things that could help with regression for 2021, 2022 school year, after-school programs to increase service time for students, increase hours for OT, PT, et cetera, to help with hours students might not have received due to COVID. Due to the pandemic, IEP goals were impacted and limited or reduced, just because of it being online and being virtual. Sometimes, that limited what could happen. Grades of students improve, and then services are pulled. So, if a student's getting an A or B, I guess what, a child with disability doesn't need that service anymore. That's not necessarily true. Limited or no summer school to help with normal regression, and some people call it the summer slide. You know, no summer school for high school students, a two-week program, only a two-week program for elementary summer school for autism students, elementary special education students that might need it weren't invited. Another thing is students that struggle with speech. And this is not articulating words, but this is actually the non-verbal communication aren't receiving those services that could help them. Students that don't fit the mold, services are sometimes not adequate. Students with hearing loss struggle due to masks affecting their communication, and I know that was because of COVID. That's nothing that you can do. You guys did clear masks, but still, it was affecting students, even though you guys did have certain protocols that you had to follow. So, special programs for students have been developed, but sometimes maintaining those programs year after year, they just fall through the cracks due to funding. J. Lorick recommendation number 16, increased training for all teachers, not just special education case managers, and instruction of students with disabilities. More training, and this is a statewide concern, more training for their staff. Another J. Lorick recommendation, increase in training for administrators to learn about the laws, IEP development, roles of special education teachers, and behavioral management practices. Currently, JMU does a two-hour presentation for administrators, but that could be expanded. J. Lorick recommendation 18 should require schools to complete an inclusive self, school self-assessment. And I think that's coming down the line. I mean, that's something that's going to hopefully be, the state is going to develop in which RCPS does. So, that is something, you know, as a school district, I think that has to come from the state. Virginia IEP offers translating services. However, it is very expensive. It might be beneficial and cost-effective to have a designated staff hired to translate IEPs and transcribe IEPs and be there for IEP meetings. Impact of the shortened school day on special needs students that need more instruction or time for professionals to get to all students that need help. You know, if we're choosing to shorten the school day, that's going to be less time for OT and speech people, you know, speech professionals to actually get to their students. So, what are we going to do? If they're going to shorten the school day, increase providers or contact for providers who come into the school to serve students while they're in school. Fund and provide transportation to outside providers. If school is limiting the time students can receive these services, or create extra block after school to provide services, extra instruction, and then have a second bus run for their students, kind of like some people do for the after-school program. Reduction of services as students progress, that is something that CAC has seen, you know, in elementary school where they have reading specialists, and then in middle school they might have one reading specialist, and then in high school, they have none. And so, it seems like, you know, if the students don't get the foundation of certain services, it just, the services just dwindles away, and there's less opportunity. As Jason has said, we are having trouble with recruiting parents, so anything you guys can do, that would be beneficial. Increase social workers. This is actually something I learned at the school board meeting at one point. And we currently have four times the number of students recommended. And so, social workers can expand their services to students if given the time with the students. So, right now, a lot of social workers are doing administrative work and paperwork, and there's so much that social workers are trained to do that could help. Improve training for writing IEPs. Sometimes, the IEP goals, they are what some people say cookie cutters, where you just, because they're ninth grader, they get this goal. You know, because they have this disability, this is the goal they're going to get. And so, actually doing goals based on the student's individual need. And then services based on what has been offered in the past instead of what can be offered to the student. At times, RCPS employees have been told or trained that those certain services cannot be placed into an IEP, and are baffled when they find out the services can be offered and sometimes even recommended by Virginia Department of Education. Staff should be able to make decisions and have the resources to implement services that are the best interest of the student and not without the fear of retaliation of not being the team player. I have a current list of the meetings, and I would be happy to meet with any of you guys to talk more about these, the successes or the concerns. That is one thing, you know, we want to do. You know, this is not just a report, this is something we would like to actively work on as a partnership. Conclusion, RCPS has exceptional staff. That is not deniable. You know, and some special education students excel in the services that they have offered. To help improve RCPS services to special education students, the students need to have well-trained staff, well-written IEPs, and willing to provide services that's in the best interest of the student, even if it's not what is the popular way or the known way to do it. The school should be given the appropriate resources. I think a lot of times, resources are limited, you know, because of staff or because of money. So, they don't just, they don't provide them to the students that need them. Students with disabilities do not choose to have these challenges, but RCPS can be exceptional in providing services to these students. If not, the students will suffer more than they already have. CAC would like to commend RCPS for the successes and exceptional work provided to the students and work with the schools to address concerns so that all students can receive what's in the best interest as they attend RCPS. So, I appreciate you guys for your time and your energy and all the time and sacrifices that you make personally to serve our community.
Before you leave, Amber and Jake, I just want to make sure if board members have any questions.
I'll go back up.
And my mic's off, too. Do board members have any questions for Amber? Another made her come all the way back up here.
I see we have these cards in our packet.
Yes.
And this card is?
So, that is a card that was designed multiple years ago, and it is just a card that you guys can give out to anybody that might be interested in being on CAC. The contact information is Scott Hand, and so Scott Hand threw that information to me. But it's just a way to get the word out about CAC.
And do you have any extra of these cards with you tonight?
We have, I have some, and there are boxes.
Can you put a couple? There are a couple people here tonight, in case you didn't notice. Somebody in this room might be interested in getting this card.
I will put them on the table.
That would be fantastic.
They're handed out at IEP meetings as well. So, when the parents meet, that's usually where they're supposed to be handed out, so.
And thank you both for all your work.
No problem.
Any other questions, board members? I just have a couple comments. Jason, thank you very much for your hard work. I know for the last four or five years, you really have taken the lead with this group. And I know that Mr. Hand struggled for quite some time to find a parent to take the lead and push forward. And it looks like great steps are being met and made for your work. And I know between work and caring for your family and all those obligations, we've appreciated the time that you've taken to do this work.
It was my pleasure.
So, Amber, we look forward to having you work with us. And this report is great, gives us lots of food for thought, that, you know, we are well aware of the COVID implications. You know, quite frankly, there's not a lot of special ed teachers out there, and so we continue to try and attract the best and the brightest to Rockingham County. And we've been very successful. I know Mr. Hand's been very successful, but there's clearly not enough. And teachers with special ed background can make a considerable amount of money throughout the state of Virginia. So, we try to attract them with the appeal of working for Rockingham County. And we'll just continue to plug along. One question I have for you, have you guys received any feedback from parents that they need assistance in understanding IEPs? I know we talked about teachers and things like that, but parent assistant going into IEP meetings, understanding the process?
On occasion, so myself and my wife will attend IEPs with people if they reach out to us, if they know how to reach out to us. We've done that in the past, and some of the members of the CAC have attended those, mostly just because it's kind of a, you know, as a parent sitting on one side of the table, and there's doctor so-and-so and such and such on you, and they're explaining things to you, and you're learning this whole new world, to have somebody with you that says, okay, this is what this is, this is how this works. So, we've done it that way.
Okay.
But it's not like, you know, overwhelming, like a lot of folks, we've just done it out of the kindness where people have asked us to do it, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I have met, personally met with people in my home to go over IEPs and explain it and goals and stuff.
That may be a goal for Mr. Hand and the committee to take a look at for this coming year. How can we provide better materials and things for people to prepare? I'm a parent who did 18, 19 years of IEP, so I totally, actually, it was more 22 because my child started at three. my child started at three with an IEP. So I'm well aware of that, and it's a very intricate system, and so, and Scott and I know we've gone toe-to-toe both as a parent and a school board member on some of this stuff, so that would be for me kind of something to look at for next year, for sure.
And I think that is something that Jason and I will continue to do as we have time.
Right.
And so I know Scott, if he has anybody that expressed concerns, he has sent emails to, to us to get support if they, they need it or help.
And I think it'd be great to create a, a little bit of a network, too. So, you know, and I may have a few minutes come January 1st, you just never know, so.
The upside, the upside to the COVID-ness and the, the move towards all the online meetings is actually allowed, I've, I've done them from a car in the parking lot at my job and, and just dialed in for IEP meetings. So that has, that is one of the positives that's come out of it. It's allowed us to be able to be more flexible with meeting with folks and doing those things now, and that might be something that we need to look at doing in the future, that would just allow a better network to be involved in those things versus just in a room somewhere.
And actually, Mr. Hand was essential along with another person that actually, the meetings are going to be at the Harvey Conference Room.
Okay.
And so that'll give us the ability to do virtual, as long as technology is working, and in person. And so hopefully, we can continue doing that with that support.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time this evening, we appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Next, Dr. Scheichel, I think you wanted to share some policy revisions with us.
Members of the board, you have a number of policy revisions in your information items again. As you know, we've been working through our entire policy manual in an effort to keep policies up to date. The Virginia School Board Association provides policies across the board, and for a while, policies were adjusted individually in Rockingham County, and so keeping up to date, you know, with all the changes has sometimes been a little bit more difficult. And so, again, as we've done over the last year and a half, Dr. Aldifer and his team have looked at each policy that comes from VSPA, compared that, compared those to Rockingham, looked at whether there are actually any substantive changes or differences, and then brought those to you for information and then for action. And so there are a number of different policies in today's list, and again, these are generally updates to policy based on new state code and also some cross-references that are updated, and, for example, fundraising and solicitation policies, staff salary schedules, a lot of managerial stuff, but then, again, public participation at school board meetings and so on. And so the more we align with VSPA, the better our updates are and the better we can stay current. VSPA also provides really important legal advice. Oftentimes, we get policy suggestions from DOE that are more vague, and then to turn those into an actionable policy is actually something that VSPA does, and it's very helpful with that. And so, again, Dr. Aldifer's not here today, as this is his week of vacation, well-deserved, I might add. And so I bring this to you today for information, and they'll be back again for action at the next board meeting, and I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Scheichel?
Dr. Scheichel, I noticed that we are deleting the KNA Violent Sex Offenders on School Property Policy, and reading over them, I believe that it was KN that it folds into, but can you please explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so there were two separate policies. One had to do with crimes against minors and the sex offender registry information, and then the other one had to do with persons registered on school property. And so I know it sometimes seems odd when a policy where the title is Violent Sex Offenders on School Property, a policy deleted, that can raise some concerns, but that's, the wording of it is now entirely in policy KN. So that's not a deletion of content, it's simply a consolidation of two policies and then the deletion of that extra policy, because otherwise it would just be a duplicate. And so oftentimes you see, you know, KN, and then KNA is an additional item, and at times, VSPA just simply consolidates those. So there's nothing that's actually being removed, it's simply a consolidation of two policies with the same information.
Thank you, that makes sense. And I've read over all these policies, and I think a lot of people in the room might be interested. I didn't see anything that addresses bathroom or locker room use.
Yeah.
Can you expand on that, please?
Right, so I did send an email to the community last night to make sure that people were aware that this is not an agenda item. And if you look at what's happened over the last few years, different school divisions handle legal mandates differently. So when the Virginia General Assembly, two years ago, passed legislation that directed the Department of Education to develop model policies for the treatment of transgender students in schools, that basically put the wheels in motion for DOE to create a committee, an advisory committee, that then would work through the topic and develop model policies. And so those are required by law, and the law also states that school divisions have to adopt policies that meet the requirements that DOE establishes before the 21, 22 school year. And the document with the model policies was first made available for public comment earlier this year, and then over a couple months, they extended it, I think, by 30 or 60 days because of the number of public comments that they received at DOE, and then they issued final policies. And I think what's confusing sometimes is the, the document itself is, I believe, 27 pages, and it's not all policy, right? So it's very important to understand that there's a lot of explanatory text, there are pages and pages of definitions, of explanations of how something might look, but the actual policy component is fairly minimal. It'll affect a few policies. Now, some school divisions have taken the road of creating very detailed policies, and others, for example, With County last week, approached it in a way that's actually also suggested by VSPA, and that is to really focus on the core of those model policies. So there, if you read the introduction into it, it is, and this is what I also said in my email last night, right, this is about creating environments for all students that are safe, that are quality learning environments, free from harassment, bullying, and discrimination. That's required by Virginia state law, that's required by federal law, and that's the core of this. And so we know that we want all students, and all students means all, right? We don't say, Rockingham County, where we care about most students, right? You just heard that in the CAC presentation, too. This is about all students. All students have a right to learn in an environment that is a quality learning environment that is safe and free from harassment, discrimination, and bullying. And that's at the core of these policies. And so what's also important to remember is that many people have said, well, we need to fight this through the courts. Well, that process began in Gloucester County in Virginia in 2014, with a transgender student who had sex reassignment surgery, hormone replacement therapy, and as a transgender male, wanted to use the male restroom and was denied that by the Gloucester School Board. It made its way through the court system, all the way to the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, a federal court, and federal court ruled in the student's favor, and it then, originally, Supreme Court thought about, well, they announced they were going to take the case. US Department of Education changed its guidance, and so it became a moot point. Supreme Court said, well, you know, we're not going to hear it if that guidance has already changed, sent it back to the Virginia courts and to the Circuit Court of Appeals, made its way back up, and on June 28th, I think, two weeks ago today, the US Supreme Court declined to hear the case. So the decision by the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, as it applies to that circuit, which includes Virginia, is the legal status right now. And so there's no fighting it through the courts, this is what the law is. It's both federal law and a state law. And as the school division, we need to make sure that we have policies in place that meet the requirements of this law. And so because the Supreme, the Supreme Court just made that decision two weeks ago, you know, even though some school districts had already worked through policy revisions, we decided to wait and get a full legal briefing once it's gone to that step, right? So now federal law is clear here, state law has already been clear, and so over the next few weeks, the board will receive a legal update that incorporates all those decisions, and then there'll also be, you know, an explanation of what policies need to be adopted. And so that's why it's not on the agenda today. It wouldn't be appropriate to revise policies before the board receives a legal briefing. And again, I want to say that again, this is about discrimination, harassment, and bullying. And I think there's some misconceptions that come out of how the model policies were written, what if it was editorial, what if it is actually policy? And so when you ask about bathroom policies, Rockingham County doesn't have a bathroom policy, right? We have a policy that prohibits discrimination and harassment and bullying, different policies that do each. And so there's a sense, because maybe how some school divisions adopted it, that on any given day, any student can just say, hey, I want to use the girls' restroom today. So, you know, boyfriend, girlfriend, say, you know what, I'm going to use the girls' restroom today with my girlfriend, and so that's my right. Well, that's not how it works. If people want to have more information and serious information about the challenges that transgender students face in terms of the percentage of students who attempt suicide, the percentage of students who do not feel safe at school, and how the changes in policy and a more respectful environment ultimately reverses that, and the fact that assaults in schools are not at all connected to whether these policies are in place, then I would recommend that people speak to psychologists and speak to pediatricians. The American Academy of Pediatrics is very clear on this, what the challenges are that transgender students face. If someone wants to ask a doctor at the hospital, for example, who is an OB-GYN, how often it happens that when a child is born, the assigned sex is not so easy to determine, ask at the hospital. That's not my expertise, right? But, yeah. You're free to ask. You're free to ask, and that information is widely available. So because this is an issue that the medical community has spoken about, and that the state legislature and federal courts have settled, it is, in fact, the board's responsibility legally to address it. And how that's going to be addressed to meet the requirements of state and federal law will be discussed in a legal briefing. And so, again, the policies, even the model policies state that these are questions affecting students who consistently assert a gender identity. This is not about a student saying on one day, I just want to use this other restroom to see what's going on. This is about students who consistently assert their gender identity, and those students deserve to learn in an environment free from harassment, bullying, and discrimination. So.
How do those students get their rights to my vacation and carry a problem?
So, to your.
If you're staying in Virginia, absolutely yes. Absolutely yes. Absolutely yes.
We're gonna, we're gonna take it, we're gonna take a deep breath, we're gonna take it, we're gonna take a deep, excuse me, excuse me, just, can we all take a deep breath, please? Please. There's a lot of passion in this room, and we understand that. We also have students in this room, let's mirror constructive conversation and dialogue for those students and for the character count pillars. So, please, please, we want, we want to be able to let all of those who've signed up will be allowed to speak, you'll have your opportunity at the podium to speak, but in order for us to get to that point, we need to keep our emotions in check right now, please. Thank you. Dr. Scheichel is going to finish, and then we will move to a couple things in public comments. Thank you.
Yep, so the policies that will be presented to the school board will be the result of legal briefing, of additional information you receive, and they will address harassment, bullying, and discrimination. I can't speak to the legal briefing, but I would anticipate, based on what happened in With County last week, that there won't be a specific bathroom policy, there will be policies addressing exactly the topics the General Assembly intended, discrimination, harassment, and bullying. The specifics of how we operate our schools and how we have operated for a long, long, long time with discrimination policies is not going to change. So there won't be a specific policy for every detail of the school day that's handled administratively and has been, right? And we've worked with families for a long time to handle individual cases. So I hope that answers your question, and that will happen in August after you receive our legal briefing. But I wanted to make sure that some of the misconceptions are also addressed.
Yes, thank you, that answered my question.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you have two information items in your packet. One is regarding the VSPA Legislative Advocacy Conference, which is on September 23rd, 2021. You also have the current financial review for the month in your folders. If you have any questions regarding the Legislative Advocacy Conference, you can talk with Mrs. Bochok, and for financial review, Ms. Mast, I'm sure will be happy to answer any questions that you have. Okay, we're going to move into public comments, and I am going to ask you again all to take a deep breath, please, okay? I'm going to call the names, I may not pronounce your name right, it's pretty hard for me to read the list, so when you come to the podium, if you would, say your name again so that the clerk of the board can record that you spoke, I'd appreciate it. On the back of the agendas, if you pick them up, there was procedures and policies for speaking in front of the board. You have a three-minute limit, and we are going to use a timer tonight. I would encourage you to use less than your three minutes. We have 25 people signed up right now, if everybody takes three minutes, we'll be here for an hour and a half, that's fine, the board is perfectly, excuse me, thank you. We're perfectly willing to stay here and listen to your feedback. I ask that when each speaker speaks, that you let that person speak and finish. It's important. It's important for this community, for us to have a respectful dialogue, and it's important for us to mirror what we want to see in our students and children in Rockingham County. And I will stop at any point until we have calm, and then we'll pick up again. A couple of other things, if you're a family unit, as I mentioned, together and you've both signed up, please share the time together, each of you, one of you speak for the group, that will cut down on the time. I don't think we all want to be here in this room in the heat for an hour and a half or two hours, so we're doing the best we can, we are, okay? So the first person that has signed up on here is, I think it is Mark Mays, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Mays, if you come to the podium.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
My name is Mark Mays. I am pastor of Grace Baptist Church in Harrisonburg, Virginia. In 1988, while serving in the United States Air Force, a gentleman handed me a, what I call a gospel trike, invited me to church. I've often, for at least 40-some years, been passing that on, trying to do for others what that did for me, changed my life forever. And after being in the military, I got out, went to Bible college, graduated, went back down to the church that I was originally involved in, and then moved to Harrisonburg in 1988. September of 1988, I started Grace Baptist Church. This September, I will complete my 33rd year, begin my 34th year. When I first- My life's goal is to help people. One thing I've learned in my almost 61 years is that in order to help people, you've got to tell them the truth. And as my mother's here, she could tell you, when I was a little boy, I thought I was the boss, but I wasn't. And my mother offended me by making sure I knew I wasn't the boss. I didn't appreciate it. She, I'll use the term that was used, she bullied me. In a sense, she corrected me. One of the best things she ever did for me is she told me the truth. I've often said this, and I'll say this to everybody in this room, truth either smacks you in the face or it pats you on the back. It depends on what side of the truth you're on. Biologically, scientifically, when a child is born a male, he never, ever will biologically or scientifically be a female. That's the fact. When a girl is born a girl, she can never biologically or scientifically become a boy. That's the fact. You can argue it, you can yell about it, you can fuss about it, you can do anything you want about it, but those are the facts. If you're going to help the young people in our community, I think it's incumbent upon you as the leaders to have the integrity, the gumption, the wherewithal to teach the If a young person came to, and I'm speaking to you folks right here, if a young person came to your home.
Thank you, Mr. Mays.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Priscilla Beach. Ms. Beach?
Thank you very much. I come here and represent the parents and the church. My son will not be attending Rockingham County schools. I will choose to homeschool him if this policy is adopted. It will not be easy to homeschool, as last year was very tough financially, but I will stand for what is right. A child is, at birth, a child is assigned the gender. And it is wrong to ask the children to have to go to a bathroom where a boy can walk into a girl's bathroom or a girl can walk into a boy's bathroom. And that is wrong. That is against God's laws. And that is just totally wrong. And my child will not be attending Rockingham County schools. You all are the leaders, and I would hope that you all would show and respect that there is children that have Christian values and beliefs. And I've raised my children that way. I have not raised my children to hate anyone, but I've also raised my children by God's laws and by God's standards.
Thank you, Ms. Beach. The next speaker is Ashley Saunders.
Hi, my name is Ashley Saunders. I'm a parent of two students who attend Rockingham County Public Schools and one who graduated in June. I'm very proud, and my son is trans. While we're all declaring that the boogeyman is hiding in bathroom stalls waiting to assault children, we are missing an opportunity to see that this rhetoric has real-world consequences to the students who are just trying to get an education that they have a right to get without feeling scared or discriminated against. With teachers and administrations, the adults these students are supposed to trust are the ones who are fighting to deny them their basic human rights. And this is why having a policy in place and consequences for that policy is so important. My son was able to use the nurse's bathroom, but it wasn't always available. And the administrators at his school did nothing to help him find an alternative, and using the bathroom at school was not the biggest issue that he faced. My son was told countless times that to get his name changed in Schoolology in the yearbook to walk at graduation, it had to be a legal name change, and then we learned that was not true. He was deadnamed on rosters, and he had to face his dead name every day to get his education. It hurt his mental health, it hurt who he was, and he had to come out as trans again and again and again in the classroom. Students are now afraid of the adults in their community because of hatred and anger that they see from its members. School is a safe place when home is not, and we need to make sure it is a safe place for every student regardless of religion, sexual orientation, gender, or color of their skin. This is a public education. We are taxpayers, and everybody is protected. And I want to say this, I am a practicing Christian, and I know the Jesus of the Bible, and he says to love. At the end of the parable of the Good Samaritan, when Jesus asks the man, he says, who is the neighbor? The man responds, the one who showed compassion. And we are called to show the same compassion that Jesus called that man. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. The next speaker is Cody Saunders.
Can I fix the microphone really fast? I'm really short. Okay. Hello, thank you. Okay. My name is Cody Saunders. My pronouns are he/him, and I am a 2021 graduate of Broadway High School, and I am a transgender man. My freshman year of high school, I was told by my principal that I couldn't change my email address, any of my information in the system, and my yearbook name. I was also told by my principal that until I started hormones, I couldn't use the men's restroom, dressing rooms, or locker rooms. As of April 5, I was able to start hormone replacement therapy. Although I did what was asked of me, I still wasn't allowed to use the men's restroom, and in fact was told that if I were in the men's restroom and I got hurt, that she wouldn't know if I would be at fault or not. The lack of protection at Broadway High School has caused many LGBT students, including myself, to get harassed and humiliated to our faces and behind our backs. It has caused going to school to be scary, nerve-wracking, and overall a negative thing. Statistics show that allowing transgender people to use the preferred bathrooms does not put cisgender people in danger, but forcing trans people to use a certain bathroom makes it more likely for them to be assaulted and sexually assaulted. There are statistics showing that trans people will avoid eating, drinking, and overall using the bathroom because of this, leading to possible medical issues and emotional distress. Luckily, it seems like Rockingham County is finally making trans students' protection a priority, but I encourage you to continue. Continue holding students, teachers, and administrators accountable for saying and enabling transphobic words and actions. Continue to make policies that allow us to use our preferred name and exist in our preferred spaces. Continue to realize that there are groups of students that go unheard and because of that lose their high school years. Because of that, do not feel safe going to school. Although to most, it will not make a difference whether these policies are created or not. For transgender students, it could literally mean life or death. Literally, life or death. I hope everyone is left tonight with a want to learn and educate themselves, and I hope the school board members leave tonight with motivation to protect Rockingham County students. Thank you.
The next speaker is Shannon Tierney.
Hi, I'm Shannon Tierney, MD, MS, FACS. And I'm here to comment on some of the issues about biology. So first off, I am a parent of an RCPS student. He is not trans or queer, as far as I know, nor am I trans or queer, but we are humans who feel a moral obligation to care for our fellow humans, particularly when their health and their lives are at risk. I am speaking today as a physician regarding the health risks of failure to acknowledge gender identity. Biologically and scientifically, gender is not clear-cut, and I would be happy to stay afterwards and discuss this with anyone, including telling you my experiences as a surgical resident at UVA, choosing a baby's gender, choosing the genitals we were going to make for an XY baby who was born with ambiguous genitalia. The AMA has filed amicus briefs supporting gender-affirming bathroom access for students. They are joined by the AAPA. The AMA has referenced the report of the 2015 U.S. transgender survey from the National Center for Transgender Equality, which surveyed 27,000 transgendered people and found that 40% reported a suicide attempt. That rate is nine times higher than the general U.S. population, nine times. A Swedish study demonstrated that gender-affirming surgery reduces mental health issues sixfold, which is evidence that the source is the rejection of trans people's identities and not gender dysphoria. Nearly 70% of transgender survey respondents reported verbal harassment, and 9% reported physical assault in gender-segregated bathrooms. This is supported by non-survey studies as well. There are no studies, no studies, that support claims that trans students pose a risk to cis students. If you could provide one, let me know. I searched PubMed this morning. The AMA Litigation Center and others tell the court that, quote, "access to single-sex facilities that correspond to one's gender identity is a critical aspect of social transition and thus successful treatment for transgender and gender-dysphoric individuals." I sat here listening today to the SEAC report discussing the amazing things that are being done for the 1,700 special needs students. Based on national studies, our school system has 200 to 400 trans students. These kids are not rare exceptions, and they deserve the same focus, the same affirmation, and the same support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tierney. Our next speaker is Jay Glendon Hensley. Is that correct?
Thank you for the opportunity to share tonight. I reviewed the 20-plus pages of the policy that was presented. I had a question or two that I came to. I thank you, Dr. Scheickel, for sharing with us what you did. I noticed that one of the predominant themes that was repeatedly appearing in the information that was provided was it continually talked about, and I'll just read it quickly. It says, "School shall allow students to assert a name and gender pronouns that reflect their gender identity without any substantiating evidence." Then it goes on to say that "all school personnel shall adhere to legal standards of confidentiality relating to information about a student's transgender status, name, legal, et cetera." It says, "In addition to adhering to all legal standards of confidentiality, school personnel shall treat information relating to a student's transgender status as being particularly sensitive, shall not disclose it to other students and parents." My question is this: I understand that, but if it's being held in confidentiality, back to the point that you shared where you said, well, one can't say I'm going to go in this bathroom today and one in that bathroom tomorrow. But if the identity is not known, then the identity is to the individual themselves. Now, am I incorrect in understanding that the policy thus far has been providing for transgender individuals? And basically, what is a gender-neutral bathroom or not?
Again, there's no, sorry. Public comment section, and I'm going to defer to the chair here, is not a time for a conversation, for a back-and-forth. You can, nope. I think that was made clear earlier, and I didn't answer, nope. There is no bathroom policy currently in place. I said that before. I'll say it again. So if you're asking whether that's the current policy, there is no restroom policy in Rockingham County.
Okay, well, I would like to, I found it interesting that in all the definitions that were given in the policy, the 20-plus pages, never once did they give a definition for gender-neutral, which says it is suitable for both male and female genders. Now, I'm not trying to recommend a policy tonight. However, if the individual themselves is held in confidentiality as to whatever gender they want to associate with, and there is a gender-neutral bathroom, why is it an issue? They can go to the bathroom of their choosing. And then on to one more point, please, and that is this: I listened to you closely regarding the litigation. I understand and know that there is a precedent which has been set at this juncture, but they also reference that it is an ongoing litigation thing, and I wish to just share this quickly.
My time's up.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
The next speaker is Jocelyn White.
Yes, my name is Jocelyn White, and I'm actually not going to address the gender issue, just because I know a lot of people are here to address it, and I'd rather take on a few minutes to address something else, and that is critical race theory. I want to let the board know that I oppose any teaching of critical race theory, also known as CRT, because it's totally antithetical to the American Constitution, which was derived the express purpose of promoting liberty for all people, not to promote one color or one type of person over another. America has not always been perfect. We freely acknowledge that. As Christians, we understand that better than anyone else because we recognize the sin nature in every human being. But the Constitution, like the Bible, has perfect principles laid out for its citizenry that were derived primarily from the Bible, hence the term inalienable rights. Liberty is not simply the freedom to do what you want, it is the freedom to do what is right, according to one's conscience. Therefore, by definition, liberty for every individual is an essential part of our humanity. CRT is a product of Marxism, which by definition must deny individual liberties to promote a collective good. It is fundamentally hostile to the Bible because it denies the sin nature of man while pretending to be able to create a man-made utopia here on earth. Historically, every example of Marxism has failed, leaving in its wake death and suffering, all in the name of equity. Instead of reading Harry Potter books, I recommend reading Red Scarf Girl by Zhili Zheng, an autobiography of a 12-year-old girl who survived the Chinese Cultural Revolution of Mao. It's time to truly wake up to the dangers of CRT. Thank you.
The next speaker is Haley Cave. Is that correct? Holly.
Hi, my name is Holly Cave. I'm not used to speaking quickly, so I reside here, and thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak. I reside here in Rockingham County with my husband and our four children. 12 days ago, I posted an online petition in opposition to Virginia's, the Department of Education's, model policies regarding the treatment of transgender students. And on that very same day, we hit the streets to speak with our community members, to get their feeling of what, how they felt about this, and to obtain in-person signatures. And those signatures, to date, are totaling about 1,400, and that number is still rising. The petition reads as follows: "We, the citizens of Rockingham County, say no to the Virginia Department of Education's recommendations regarding bathroom utilization. We stand adamantly against abolishing sex-based facilities and giving gender-confused individuals access to private spaces for members of the opposite sex, including, but not limited to, restrooms and locker rooms. We are also opposed to single-use bathrooms being built inside the schools. Reasons for our opposition are as follows: These policies create real and significant safety and privacy risks. Bathrooms open to all genders have long been crime attractors and places in which offenders seek out their victims. Be advised that in 2018, a Georgia school implemented an open bathroom policy, and as a result, a five-year-old girl was sexually assaulted by a gender-fluid male. This instance is being cited only to give validity to the not only imminent but already occurring predicted results of implementing such policies. We are resolutely opposed to single-use bathrooms being built inside the schools for a plethora of reasons. They are highly dangerous and undoubtedly will become a venue for all types of unacceptable and illegal behavior within a school setting. Sexual interaction will be commonplace, and these single-use bathrooms, this also includes consensual sex and sexual assault. These bathrooms will be an invitation for drug use. And lastly, access to single-use bathrooms is an extreme disservice to those who struggle with suicidal tendencies and temptations. We can do better than this." temptations. We can do better than this for our children. Our goal and ultimate recommendation is the continuation of gender-based facilities with faculty bathrooms being provided to students who prefer them. Gender-based facilities provide a reasonable right to privacy for individuals that do not have any type of gender identity issues, and faculty bathrooms provide a reasonable alternative to those who do suffer with these issues. Let it be known that we acknowledge and love individuals who struggle with gender confusion, dysphoria, etc., etc. On the same token, we also do not want to jeopardize the safety and equity of female and even male students who do not suffer with these same issues. We are solely interested in equality for individuals on all sides of the spectrum. Consequently, we are not interested in placing any one individual’s rights ahead of another. We simply believe that all individuals should have a right to privacy in a bathroom or other locality in which privacy is assumed within a school setting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Our next speaker is Jane Eppert, or Eppery? Eppert.
Hi, I’m Jane Eppert, and I want y’all to know that fat kids get bullied, short kids get bullied. Many commit suicide over that. Christians get bullied big time now, not just children, but adults like me, because as a Christian, if you try to live by the Bible, you hate people. That’s not true. That’s not true. And I want to tell you something. These policies, I know for a fact, I can bring you two Rockingham County students right before you right now, that the girl dressed in boys’ clothes to meet her boyfriend in the bathroom for a quick sexual encounter. Therefore, your teen pregnancies is going to be on the rise, and you also may have some sexual assault charges. Because if it’s one of my grandchildren, that that’s something that they got — why can’t my grandchildren feel safe going to the bathroom? Because everybody, everybody, everybody that goes to the bathroom, every male that goes in a female’s bathroom is not a transgender. He’s curious, and he’s after something. And it could be one of my granddaughters, and I assure you, people that pass these policies will be held not only accountable with me, they’re going to be accountable to God Almighty. You are — God created two genders. God created male and female. Man is creating all the other genders. There is an XX chromosome and an XY, and as the doctor, so-called doctor, said, “If you’re born a certain way, they check you out. Check for ovaries. I think you’re a female. If you got a uterus, you’re a female. If you got a penis, you’re a male.” Simple biology.
Thank you, Ms. Eppert. Our next speaker is Cherith Bradshaw. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Can you spell that? C-H-E-R-I-T-H. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Hello, everyone. I am Cherith Bradshaw. I am 15 years old and a rising junior at Spotswood High School. I will be speaking against the new model policy set forth by the Virginia Department of Education, and I will do so on behalf of my peers. To implement such radical changes would require you to completely reject the truth and forget the safety of your students. First, these policies will require you to deny reality. Sex is defined by the World Health Organization as the biological characteristics that define humans as male or female. We all know that a male is born with XY chromosomes, and a female is born with 2X chromosomes. It doesn’t take an expert or statistic to tell us that, even though there are plenty of those. In fact, that is still what your textbooks teach as of two years ago, when I took Biology I. Would you, as people responsible for the education of an entire county of children, be willing to go against science and accept a false reality? The truth is, God created every one of us as male or female, each with a unique purpose, and no policy the Virginia Department of Education has passed or will pass will change that. Second, the safety of every student is put at risk through these policies. I know you, the school board, would like to thank the best of every single student, but just a few hours spent in one of the county’s high schools would probably change your perspective. From a female’s perspective, there are many guys who will take advantage of this policy and use this as a prime opportunity to sexually harass females in bathrooms or locker rooms. The transgender community only makes up 0.6% of the population, according to the Williams Institute. To make that other 99.4% of your students uncomfortable in the name of inclusion would be absurd. A catchphrase used all the time, and even tonight, by you, your administrators and teachers is, “We want school to be a safe learning environment.” Now, I would like to flip that on you, and I ask you to make this a safe learning environment for all students, and do not give into the government’s demands. I ask you, as a student of Rockingham County, to take a stand and stop being so fearful of what the state will do. I can — I can assure you that your funding cut will be much larger when these parents in this room start pulling their kids out of school. Stand for truth and stand up for safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cherith. Our next speaker is John Bradshaw.
I’ll use part of my time to tell you that I didn’t help her with that speech at all. She wrote it all herself. So I don’t want anybody thinking I had two speeches. As a teacher, I’m concerned about covering a PE class and seeing my female student in her undergarments because she decided she’s a boy today. As a teacher, I’m concerned about the student who sits in my classroom trying their best to hold their feces and urine until they get home because they’re too fearful to use the school restroom. As a teacher, I’m concerned about the student who can’t concentrate on the Industrial Revolution because he just received his first peep show in the locker room, courtesy of the school system. As a teacher, I’m concerned about the transgender student as well, who can’t learn about the Great Depression because they’re in a state of depression themselves. Not because she can’t use the same bathroom as me, but because she is so confused and no one can help her, because they’re too concerned with political correctness and acceptance to help a child who is suffering mentally, to help a child who is suffering mentally and spiritually. I’m concerned about the pressure this puts on administrators who will be forced to make a decision if a student has consistently asserted a gender identity before allowing them to use the facilities of their choice. And you all know that defining that word consistently is going to be a chore for you, and you’re just going to let them use it because you don’t want to get sued. As a parent, I’m concerned that my 15-year-old daughter will have to share the same restroom and locker room with an 18- or 19-year-old adult male who could easily snap a quick picture. I’m concerned that my boys will see body parts in their locker rooms that they should only see on their wife one day. I’m concerned that school will be so unsafe that my kids will have to miss out on the normal public school environment and activities because we have pulled them out of public education. And I’m concerned with the direction we’re headed as a society. As a Christian, as a Christian, I’m concerned with my religious freedoms being infringed. My belief that God created us male and female will be compromised by me being asked to use an improper pronoun. I am concerned with the eternal destination of my students and the leaders who are making these decisions. Matthew 18:10 says, “Take heed that you do not despise one of these little ones; for I say to you that in heaven their angels also see the face of my Father, who is in heaven.” Matthew 18:6 says, “But whoever calls is one of these little ones who believe in me, the sin is should be better of him if a millstone were hung around his neck, and we are drowned, be drowned in the depths of the sea.” We’re all going to be judged one day, and he’s not going to judge us based on our popularity, our economic status, or our success in the eyes of man. We are going to be judged by our works, and I don’t want to stand before him, have him done what was politically correct, but what was right. My prayer is that you feel
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Our next speaker is Patrick Fritz.
Good evening, y’all. My name is Patrick Fritz. I’m a resident of Broadway. Not only that, I am a career retired military. In 1996, when I joined the military, I swore an oath to the Constitution of the United States of America that I said, “I will support the Constitution against all enemies, both in domestic.” That Constitution was very, very clear, and with that, we have had the federal courts say that discrimination against any American for race, color, religion, national origin, gender, including pregnancy, sexual orientation, identity, is protected by the Constitution of the United States of America. I will defend each one of these students to be able to express their God-given right to not be discriminated against by public officials in our public institutions. End of story. I don’t care what your personal beliefs are. That does not matter to me. What matters to me is the Constitution of the United States that protects these students. If your religion prohibits you from being gay, cool, don’t be gay. If your religion prohibits you from using a restroom that does not mix your gender identity, then don’t use that restroom. But you may not discriminate against my children, against my neighbors, against my friends for their identity. You can do that in your church. You can do that on the street. Your children, contrary to what Fox News tells you, can bring a Bible into the school with no problem. This is a mandate. Obey the law. The law says that this will happen. This will happen. This is going to happen because it’s the law. Let me define mandate. It is an official order or commission to do something. This is not a request. This doesn’t care about your feelings, right? Facts over feelings. The fact is, this is the law, and this is will be done. End of story. What you are doing now, what you people are doing now, is the 21st century equivalent to massive resistance, where the Virginia voters shut down public schools because they don’t want to integrate. Well, you know what? That’s not happening on my watch. That’s not happening on my watch. You want to take your kids out of school? Take your kids out of school. We don’t want that. We don’t want your bigotry in our school.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. Okay, we’re about halfway through. We’re going to take another deep breath. Just take a moment so we can get through the last 12 people that we have to speak. Okay? The next speaker is Chris Guy. Is that correct? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Chris Guy. I am a resident of Rockingham County, and I’m really sad that we are here tonight. It breaks my heart to see all this yelling and nodding and screaming over each other, and I’m sorry that you guys have this job. It’s a hard one. My college experience led me to go to the wrong bathroom one day, and you know what happens when you got to go. I just made a bad decision, made the wrong turn in a co-ed dorm, and I walked in, and I just started going to the bathroom. Well, in the stall next to me, I didn’t know anybody was there, and I heard somebody get up and go outside. And when I came out of the bathroom, there were two girls standing at their room door, and they were looking at me. It was embarrassing, to say the least, and quite inappropriate of me as well. And so we have these values of appropriateness and inappropriateness, and the people that sit behind me here, I look at you guys, and I can’t understand your struggle, and please forgive me for that. It’s my problem, not yours. But at the same time, there’s a lot of people here, and we’re not going to change anybody’s mind. Everybody’s got their minds made up that walked in here. If you walk through that door, your mind’s already made up. I just hope we can learn something from all this, what’s appropriate, what’s inappropriate. That’s really what it comes down to. I don’t want my wife walking in on me when I’m going to the bathroom. I mean, that’s just simple, but this is a whole different ballgame here, because these folks want some rights, and these folks want to protect their rights. I feel for you guys, because, you know, if somebody is traumatized with the lady who made the comment about, you know, statistics, somebody got raped, somebody got molested, and the board, you all had to make a decision. I mean, you got to play to their side, and you got to try to play to these people’s side as well, and both of them could end up in court. I mean, you’re damned if you do and damned if you don’t, forgive my language. And so when I was at a college course, class, a whole group of people came in, and they were pretty intimidating. Thank you all for serving us and listening to our comments.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. Our next speaker is Erin I.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a few moments of your time. My name is Erin I. I’m a parent to a middle-schooler and a high-schooler in Rockingham County schools, and I also have a younger child who is not yet in kindergarten. I am also proud to be entering my 18th year as an elementary classroom teacher here in our CPS. And, Dr. Shekel, I did read your email, and I did come here knowing that it was not on the agenda today, but I’ll explain in a moment why I’m here. I am not here to try to convince you that policies ensuring equity in education are needed or necessary, because I believe that you know that. It’s pretty clear, in fact, that these policies are crucial for our faculty and staff and students and families. I don’t need to tell you that as teachers, administrators, and other school staff, it is our legal and ethical responsibility to ensure a safe, high-quality education for all of our students. I do not take that responsibility lightly, and I don’t believe that you do either. I know that you know that all students deserve to feel safe and secure at school. I also know that you know that LGBTQ students are protected federally under Title IX. So I trust all of that, and I believe that you will do what’s necessary to protect and support all students and teachers in our CPS, then why am I here? I’m here because of what I have seen on social media recently and some things that I’ve seen in this room this evening. I want Rockingham County students and families, as well as everyone in this room, to know that while you are likely and have heard some hurtful comments from people who are afraid of what they don’t understand, you also have allies in this community who are ready to love and support you. I am a parent who believes in supporting children to be their best authentic selves. I am a teacher who believes in school as a safe space and policies that ensure equity. I have read and do support the model policies for the treatment of transgender students in Virginia’s public schools. I am an ally, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. I. Our next speaker is Bryce McDonald. Our next speaker is Bryce McDonald.
First off, thank you for having me up here. My name is Bryce McDonald. I'm a Marine Corps Navy veteran. For the most part, I just want to live for God and be left alone and not have to worry about what goes on with my kids in school. But we don't live in a place and time today where that seems to be what I can do. So I'm going to address three things. Most people's already covered a lot of them. One thing I'm going to touch on real quick is everybody's all up in arms about science and biology and everything else. I'm going to tell you one thing. A lot of studies aren't done about stuff that's put in our children's water, about things, children across our country having their food. I don't know if you know what atrazine, bromide, chlorine, fluoride, what it does to the human brain? It can actually alter the human genome, where you start thinking a different way, where your body starts reacting to things a different way. Now, most of the products we get come from third-world countries, so there's not a lot we can do about it. What I can do about it is say that I am a man of God. I do pray every night, and I do pray for my kids. I also pray for the children of each and every one of you here in Rockingham County, and I pray that their souls are saved. Number one, CRT has no place in our schools, and I'm going to tell you why. Fighting on the battlefield, I don't care what race, religion, creed you have, you are my brother, I will have your back, and we will defend each other to protect the United States. Right now, our United States is under attack. Number two, I've written over certain things. I don't know if it's true. Like you said, this is not a question-and-answer series, so therefore, masks in schools for unvaccinated children, this is segregation. We've already lived segregation. I don't think we need it again. Number three, transgender in schools. Like I said, I'm a man of God, and like I said again, biology will change people depending on what they're exposed to and things like that. But under Almighty God, there are two genders, male and female. You are born one of the other. I'm not going to get heated, I'm not going to get emotional. The only thing I'm going to say is I hope you work to defend the children of Rockingham County as hard as I did to protect each and every one of y'all's rights given to us by the Constitution of this republic.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Our next speaker is Samantha Michael.
Hello, I'm Samantha. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Good evening. I'm speaking up on behalf of concerned parents, grandparents, and community members tonight regarding the new transgender policy. God has entrusted us with the safety of our children and the future children. This is not a task we should take lightly. Those of you on this board tonight work for us. You were elected to govern our community's public schools. Your role is to ensure that school districts are responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of this community. The state does not know what is best for our children. They're not in our homes, they don't know. By going along with this policy, our children's mental health and physical health are put in jeopardy, as if 2020 wasn't difficult enough constantly instilling fear in the majority of the people. Now, they are wanting to take away the freedom to privacy and comfort while using the restroom and dressing rooms to accommodate a small percentage. What about rape, unwanted touching? We've had teachers in this very county who have been in trouble with children, the minors. By going along with this policy, you will be indoctrinating our children to believe a lie is the truth and that the truth is a lie. Teaching children lying is all right, and that they can lie to their parents? Where's your morals? In reference to the fear of funding being cut, our children are not for sale. 2 Chronicles 7:14, "And my people who are called by my name humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and forgive their sin and heal their land." We, the parents and community, say no to the demonic, evil socialist agenda of the transgender policy, as well as critical race theory, the continuance of masks and enforced vaccinations. It is time to stand up for what is right for our children. They are gifts from God and should be treated as such. If you aren't willing to do that, I'm sure someone else will gladly be willing to take your seat.
Thank you, Ms. Michael.
Hello. My name is George Williams. I'm a resident of this county, and if you know me, you know I'm probably one of the most opinionated, blunt men you will ever meet in your entire life. We have covered clearly all the concepts by several speakers, for and against. The simplicity of the matter is this: It is the protection of all, but not at the destruction of the greater group. Simple. Every child has a right to a quality education in every school, and we should fight diligently for that. But if this school board creates an environment that is biased, prejudiced against people who choose the Christian path, I assure you, the people who are speaking to me will take their children out of your schools. Now, I served in the United States Army in a scout recon team when we thought we were going to have World War III. I, with my eyes, not some book you read, but with my eyes, saw what communism does to a nation. Now, we have this thing called critical race theory. We want to rename it DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Sounds like we ought to plant flowers for it. Simple fact of the matter is, it is just a nice way to veil what critical race theory is, pitting one person against another, like we are here tonight. We, as Americans, should learn to stand together in equality and not punish those who disagree with us. Yelling acquires anger. We should learn to speak gently and kindly with one another in spite of our differences. But as a soldier, I have seen what communism does. I saw men to race for freedom from East Germany to West Germany, step across a thing called a red line, and shot in the back with an AK-47 because they desired what we have here. What will you do, representatives? You can be replaced. But in the final analogy, we must do what is honorable and right for all Americans. And that's it.
Our next speaker is Matthew Cross.
My legs are sore from standing for this long, but my children are worth standing I didn't come with a prepared speech in my hand. I came tonight for my daughter, that's five years old and deserves the right to attend Rockingham County Public Schools, the same way I did when I came through this county. And those who are gathered here tonight, we're not racist, we're not homophobes, we're not against you for the transgender community. I love you. I have friends that are gay, I have friends who are trans. And the soundbites I've heard over the last couple of months, because I dared to come to a meeting like this and stand up to the board, to a board member who spoke to conservatives and said that we had lost our souls, I have received some of the most outrageous comments about who I am. I served 10 years almost in this public school district as a school resource officer. I love all kids. I don't have to say that. I live that. I don't have to say that I love every single... That's what I did for almost 10 years. When someone came to harm our kids, it was me standing at that door. When there were threats on social media saying, "I'm going to come tomorrow and kill some people at school," it was me at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning going after that child's residence and searching their homes to make sure all of your kids were safe. That's my wife. And I'm glad she spoke up, because we do this together, and we do it as a community. We can do this in a way that's loving and is caring and stands up for one another. And we don't have to shout at one another, and we don't have to hold signs behind one another, and we don't have to say all these things. But we can show the love of God. The love of God doesn't mean acceptance. If God accepted us, then he wouldn't have had to come and died upon a cross for our That's straight-up Bible 101. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever would believe in him would not perish but have everlasting life. My kids do things all the time that I don't accept, but I still love them. And we can do a better job than what we're doing, and I'm here for the teachers and the students tonight of Rockingham County, and I want you to know that I'm here for you and I'm coming. Thank you for listening tonight.
The next speaker is Chelsea Wine.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chelsea, and I'm a parent in the Rockingham County School System. I received your email stating that masks in bathrooms would not be discussed at tonight's meeting. You stated that your office has blown up with calls and emails, which tells me there are numerous concerned parents, and you don't want to hear what we have to say. We say this: We want our children unmasked, in a restroom or locker room according to their God-given genders, and we don't want critical race theory in the halls of our schools. It is past time that the many stop bending to the will of the few. Implement policies that allow our children to grow and be educated in an unbiased environment. It's time you work for the people, the parents, not Richmond.
Thank you, Ms. Wine. Our next speaker is Clint Payne.
I'm his wife, Erica Payne. I'm on the list, too.
I'll take care of this. Hi, I'm Clint Payne. I grew up in this community. This is my wife. Back there is my son and daughter. My son's in high school, at Broadway High School. My daughter will be attending Linville-Eadham Elementary. As far as transgender, there ain't but two genders, male and female. I don't want my daughter standing or sitting in a stall with some little boy peeing beside her with the lid up. That's inappropriate. She don't know what sex is. I'm an American. I'm a Christian. That flag comes for anything. These childrens come for anything. It's your duty to protect my children. You want to talk about suicide to transgender? Well, suicides in all genders, suicides in every aspect of all children. I lost a brother to suicide. So that's not just making it about one group. If you want to address suicide, that's address it all across the board. I want to identify as a superhero, but strapping a cape over my shoulders don't make me 10-foot tall and bulletproof. You are born what you are. And if you folks came back to my community, I will vote you out.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Our next speaker is Kevin Wine.
Hi, my name's Kevin Wine. I'm not a public speaker. I have no desire to stand up here tonight. I served this country, and I served that flag. And I served that flag so my child could grow up in a school that was safe. I want to strongly urge you to unmask our children. Stop abusing them. Masking our children is abuse. I want you to understand something. Each and every one of you have been voted in by we, the people. These people have voted you in. We do not stand for what's going on in Richmond. This is our community. Richmond will not dictate what our community does. Our tax dollars pay you every day. Our tax dollars can go somewhere else. I want you to understand that. I'm sure there are many people in this community, right here in this building, that would gladly take your position if you do not vote correctly on this. I want to thank you for your time, and I apologize. I'm not a public speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Our next speaker is Sandra Parks.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Parks, and I'm from Bridgewater, Virginia. And I really want to thank you all for your support for all students to be free from discrimination and bullying and harassment. I really appreciated your explanations of the policies and the intent behind them to protect our students. I am the mom of a non-binary child who graduated from Rockingham but left as soon as they could. And it was a loss for Rockingham County. And I say that not just because it was my kid and I love them very much. You know, they were varsity soccer champion in a lot of different things, 99 percentile SAT, but they left as soon as they could. But I'm one of the lucky ones. My kid was alive, and my kid found a place where they could be valued. And their experience in Rockingham County Schools at that time was very bad, and unfortunately, it sounds like there's a lot of things that have not improved, and I appreciate your attempts to do that. I'm also a retired educator with Harrisonburg, and with many of my coworkers, we received training to become LGBTQ allies. And I saw the difference having trained, empathetic adults in our school system makes for both, well, for kids and for teachers. It makes a difference for all kids. So I urge the board, and I thank you, I urge you to continue to do everything you can to protect all of our students, following the guidance and the mandates from the states, and protecting transgender children.
Thank you, Ms. Parks. Our next speaker is Erica Payne. Okay, all right. Our next speaker is Allison Seaver.
Good evening. My name is Allison Seaver, and I want it to be known that I come here in peace and not with hate in my heart. My husband and I have four children. Our twins just graduated from ERHS this past June. We have always admired Rockingham County schools and the education that it provides. We have a rising freshman and sixth grader currently in this school system. I have worked for the past six years as a teacher assistant and truly enjoyed my job. And it takes a lot for me to come up here as a parent and an employee and even losing friends to speak, but I feel that it is necessary. Not wanting to discuss such a controversial subject when we are less than 50 days from the return of school is unacceptable. The email last night was a last-minute response to rumors of the Rockingham County community upset by this subject, and you want to keep putting it off. Dr. Scheichel just spoke briefly on the policy and pointed out only the harassment issues. There is much more to the policy than a child being harassed for the choice of sex. This is opening doors to many problems in the future in our schools. I have known about -- ooh, sorry. I have known about this subject since February and signed a petition against the Department of Education passing the policy. So I know that each of you have known about this far longer than I. We got nothing but emails during COVID about COVID, but not one email in regards to this topic. What I have learned is the board makes their minds up before these meetings. Anyone who has spoken during COVID meetings should realize that the board has their minds made up. Something has to change on how topics as controversial as this is solved. We, the community, should have more say in decisions, and you, the entire board, should listen and figure out ways to solve these issues. I am begging you to please consider a different way of how to handle this. Me coming up here and talking, everyone coming up here and talking, you all don't listen because I never came to a board meeting before during COVID, and now it was known then that you didn't, you had already had your minds made up. Lastly, and most importantly, I am a Christian who loves all. I do not have to love a lifestyle choice or a sin. And I pray that the board will realize you can't cater to one group and will consider all students and staff. May God bless each of you.
I'll get this. Thank you, Ms. Seaver. That concludes our public comments speakers for this evening. We will move into action items. I thank you all for, number one, being here, and, number two, for maintaining constructive dialogue with us, providing us information and food for thought as we continue to navigate these choppy waters. Next is action items. Board, you have the minutes from the last meeting. I need a motion for approval.
I move we approve the minutes with the June 14, 2021, meeting as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lur. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Yep. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Board members, we're going to take two minutes. We're going to take two minutes. And then we'll finish the agenda. Okay, board members, we'll continue the agenda. Board members, you have the bills that were submitted to you for June 2021.
I recommend approval of the bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the 2021-June bills. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion, board members?
Always good to pay our bills.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think the motion carries, 5-0. Next is field trips.
Board members, you have one field trip for your approval. Turner Ashby TSA state officer is going to attend the new officer workshop in Abington, July 31 to August 2. And I recommend approval of the field trip request.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the TSA field trip? Wow, that's a lot of Ts. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation and approve the field trip as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lur. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion, board members?
I do want to point out that when I said that we had two state FFA officers, I missed that we also have a TSA state officer, so congratulations to that student as well. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Lur. Any other questions, board members? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 I know I'm switching my vowels and everything tonight. It's been a -- I mean, it is 9:00. Sorry. Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Next is a resolution authorizing superintendent to resign, reassign personnel or to reassign personnel. Yeah, that's it.
This is an annual resolution that the board passes each school year pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 22.1-297. And I recommend approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the resolution to reassign personnel. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Any questions or discussion?
Just to be clear, that's reassign personnel? Because every time I read it, I made the same mistake.
Yes, reassign.
Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. The next is the VSP Annual Delegate, Convention Delegate and Alternative Delegate Selection. So we need to pick a delegate and an alternate delegate for the November 17 through 19 meeting, which I believe is going to be back in person. Typically, in the past, we've assigned that to the chair and the vice chair unless we want to make changes this year. And we can make changes up until right before the meeting. So any discussion, board members, about that?
I'm fine with that.
Does the chair plan on attending this year?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so let's, we need a motion to select the delegate and the alternate delegate. So the chair will move that the delegate will be the chair and the alternate delegate will be the vice chair to the Virginia School Board's Association Delegate Assembly on November 18. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Okay, health insurance and dental rates, correct? Oh, Ms. Mast.
Chair Reed and members of the board this evening for your approval are both health insurance rates for both our traditional plan and our high deductible plan, and also our dental rates. They are effective October 1, 2021, and there is no increase next year. These rates are the same as they are this year.
I recommend approval of the health and dental insurance rates effective October 1 as presented by Cheryl Mast.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the health and dental insurance rates for next year. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the dental and health insurance rates as presented and recommended.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion? That's good news, Cheryl, that we're not -- I think that's the second year in a row, right? That we haven't had to increase the raise. So the employees got raises and they've got no --
That's correct.
They're held homeless. So thank you. Thank you for working with the county on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries, 5-0. AP Biology textbook adoption.
Chair Reed, members of the board, Dr. Scheichel.
You can move it.
Move this thing up just a little bit.
High-tech environment.
Yeah. Due to the changes in the AP Biology curriculum, our book needed a refreshment for the 21-22 school year. To meet the changes, I am requesting the adoption of the 2019 Campbell Biology in Focus Third Edition. This book was unanimously chosen by the entire committee of students, parents and teachers.
And I do recommend approval of the AP Biology textbook as presented by Dr. Shiflett.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the AP Biology textbook. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lur. Any questions or discussion, board members?
Dr. Shiflett, is this, it says book, so I'm assuming it's paper. Is there a component, a virtual component?
It is paper book. And for most of our AP courses, they are, we're still using traditional textbooks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that ends our action items for this evening. We will move into other business and school board comments, and we'll start with Mr. Falk.
I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Ms. Lur?
Thank you. In the form of a question, I suppose, I think, isn't it great that we were able to meet tonight and to have conversation, although sometimes heated, still civil conversation about things that we're passionate about? It's good to have that kind of input from the community, and I appreciate it. I also noticed that we had a number of veterans that spoke tonight, and I want to personally thank them for their service because of people like that gives us the ability to meet in a situation like this tonight. So thank you to everyone that was here, but especially those who have served. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lur. Dr. McQuilkin?
I would just like to echo Ms. Lur's comments. We thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Breeden?
Madam Chair, I've been sitting here wrestling with whether I should pass or whether I should not. I have given over 22 years of service to the Rockingham County Public School System, sacrificed a lot of time with family, with children, with grandchildren, for virtually no pay. Now, I don't say that for any kind of sympathy. But I'm done. I'm done. So those who want to vote against me or take my seat, you're welcome to it. You're welcome to it. I'll do anything that I can do to help you as long as you pledge to support all the children, not just a few. Now, my decisions that I have made and contributed to over those 22 years have not always been popular, and I have welcomed criticism. I've spent countless hundreds of hours during my workday meeting with people to discuss our differences. But I'm done because of the mean-spiritedness. I think of the movie The Green Mile. I'm just tired, boss. I'm tired of all the fighting. Now, you can disagree with my positions, and that's fine. But I relinquish to no man judgment on my soul. My relationship with my God is between me and my God, just as yours is or is not. I don't believe that when Jesus gave the Great Command before he ascended into heaven, that he mentioned anything about us judging our fellow man. I'm pretty sure he was thinking, "I'll keep that job myself." As most all of you know, when he was asked, "Which are the most important of the commandments?" The second one was, "Love your neighbor as yourself." Now, I don't mean to preach to you, ladies and gentlemen, but it's only by God's grace that I'm going to get through that gate because I'm a flawed human being. As the Apostle Paul said, "I do the things I shouldn't do, and I don't do the things I should do." But I try. And we got to get better at this. As a community, as a state, as a nation, we have got to get better than this. And I don't believe that we're ever going to be able to love our neighbors as ourselves until we learn to love ourselves as human flawed individuals. Because when we can love the fact that we are flawed and that God loves us anyway, then we can start to look at our neighbors and love them in spite of their faults. This has been a, this has been an eye-opening meeting, and I'm sorry for taking so long. But I'm reminded of the parable of the 99 sheep and the one. I sort of see my job as a school board member as being a shepherd. And sometimes you move that flock where you're uneasy, but you still care about that one. You got to go get that one. Now, most of you, including myself, are probably more accustomed to being part of the 99. But if you've ever been that one, if you've ever been that one, you will appreciate that parable. Okay? Okay? So you're welcome to this seat. I'm willing to work through this and work through it and discuss it any way I can. I've had two phone calls. But you cannot speak for God with hate in your voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. Scheichl?
I don't have the philosophical statement that Mr. Breeden just so eloquently put in front of you, but I do want to make sure that we understand that those who spoke and who, as one of the board members said, you know, served this country. Ms. Lur, you know, thanked the veterans for defending this country and the Constitution of this country. I want to make sure everyone understands that whether a law is constitutional and what the Constitution means is up to the Supreme Court. And when people say that there's a statement in the model policies that says it's still being litigated, that's because the litigation didn't end until June 28th, two weeks ago today, two weeks ago today, when the US Supreme Court, very conservative court, by the way, said, "We're not hearing this case." So this is settled for the Fourth Circuit, and that's the law. That's the law of the land. And as a school board, that's the parameter. I'm not a school board member, but it is my role to bring policies in front of the school board that meet legal requirements. We can have good conversations about masks, but as long as we are under a public health order or an executive order from the governor, that's the law for us. And we can have all kinds of conversations about whether masks should be worn only by those who are not fully vaccinated. There are all kinds of good conversations, and we're open to those, right? And we'll have that conversation, but we're not there yet because this order expires on the 25th. And when it comes to critical race theory, I have an easy answer. It's not being taught in public schools. Critical race theory is an advanced theoretical framework that's taught in law schools. It would not be, I will say this, it would not be appropriate in a high school because that's not what critical race theory is about. It's about lawyers learning to understand the impact on law on societal structures. And that's not what we teach in school. We teach in school about US history that involves topics like slavery. There's no question about that, and I know all of you know that. And that's not something to hide from, but it's not critical race theory. That's, that's a concept, yeah, I will agree, that's too advanced for any high school to talk about. So I'll, I'll clearly make that statement. Critical race theory, I think, is just, in current efforts, just mislabeled. But there's one more comment I want to make, and it's, you know, these comments rarely touch me personally when people accuse me of doing certain things because I know how I operate, and I think every, many in the room know this. But when people talk about suicide and how we don't understand that it affects all, yeah, it's not just a public speaker who lost his brother to suicide. I did too. After he was sexually assaulted as a six-year-old boy, and I was in front of a locker room, knocking on the door, asking when he would come out, and 20 years later, he took his own life. So, yeah, those, and that's, that happens to families. But that's not the conversation here. This is about what drives people to suicide and what, and which population groups suffer of that much more than others, and that's what this conversation is about. So I understand suicide, and I don't want to go into what it took to get his body out of a room. So that's where it stops for me, when we are accused of not understanding. All of us have our stories, and I have that. And so that's just a personal comment that I take very seriously because, yeah, that was almost 20 years ago, and it was not a good time, and we all knew why it happened. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichl. Couple final comments. Thank you all that have stayed all the way through the meeting with us. I know this has been a really long meeting, and we do have other things we still need to do in closed session this evening. But I appreciate that we had people that were willing to stand in front of that podium. It is not easy to do. It really isn't. It's not easy to jeopardize your livelihood. It's not easy to jeopardize your family, and it's not easy to speak in front of us, just as it's similar for us. It's not easy for our families to hear us take what we heard tonight. It's not easy for our families to be told how they feel about us. It's not easy. This is not an easy job, and we will all readily admit that. And it's funny because Ms. Bocock, I asked her to order a book for me, and she gave it to me today, and the book is called Leading with the Head and Heart. So I'm really looking forward to reading that book this evening because I think as a school board member, that's what you need to do. And so I'm going to see what's in this book, and I'm happy to pass it along, particularly to people who are interested in running for positions on the board, along with a few other books that I've ordered recently. But that's the way I lead, with my head and my heart. And that's the way I will continue to lead until we get through the rest of this year and my term ends in the end of December. Thank you for being with us. Safe travels. We have reason to go into closed session. Board members, I would ask that you, that somebody make a motion to enter closed meeting.
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2 dash 3711A1, to discuss and consider personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation.
Thank you, Ms. Lur. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion?
I would like to point out, I've seen, especially on social media, where people have a misunderstanding of when we vote and how we vote and things like that. We only ever vote in public session. The closed session is to discuss things that have, that have a private nature, like a person's employment or a student's record or something like that. We always come back into the open session before we cast a vote about anything. And the only thing we ever talk about in closed session is specifically what we go into closed session to talk about. And we, we affirm that after the, after we come back into open session, that we only spoke about the things that we were supposed to. So everything we do is very transparent, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone's clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Appreciate that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, right? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we're now in closed session. Thank you all for being here.